Maybe I should do, I'm thinking of a number between one and 10, see who gets these.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting a order here. And I would like to get an approval of the agenda, or if there's any add, uh, additions to it.
No, nothing to add.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Mr. Cottrell, what was yours, sir?
Thank you, the board, uh, obviously, you know, budget is, there's budget season and there's budget that goes year round. This is a part of the year round process. The last couple of budgets have included what I would call a very, uh, very basic CIP recognition of large projects, large, big dollar projects. Prior to my arrival, uh, the, the board started to engage with Davenport. And I think you, they're one of the financial, primary financial advisors for localities across Virginia. Several, uh, several large, uh, localities across the nation are their customers, their clients. David Rose, you all have been met before, he'll introduce the rest of his staff this evening. But basically, this is the numbers, uh, portion of the, uh, of your capital improvements program. Do need to say that this is not all inclusive. There are some other items that are out there that we know about that came in late in the process. But this is, uh, where we are right now at this point with the capital improvements, uh, planning. So, uh, with that, I'd like Mr. Rose to, uh, excuse me, Mr. Rose, let him introduce his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell, again, uh, good to be in front of you. RT is one of my partners and we've been together now about 20 years. So maybe he'll, maybe he'll work out. But anyway, I'm serious now, um, I will do most of this, I'm gonna, when people are getting tired of listening to me, I'll just turn on the RT to give them a little break and so we don't really have a, I'm gonna take this, he'll take that. But the idea is to walk you through as much as you can stand. And we do appreciate this. You may recall, at one time, um, we were all together, many of us were together, talking over at VACO. And that was basically, uh, two and a half years ago. We said we're gonna move towards things to be done right. I feel like we've moved in that direction for those that are in the audience. We prepared a general review of the county. We then did a general review of the schools. And I was here at RT as well. And so again, I feel like we understand and know the county, we know your challenges. And now it's, it's frankly, now it's sort of go time for a couple of projects. And I feel like it's, uh, it's a lot has transpired, so we look forward to talking about that. So with that said, um, on page one of this, um, again, background, uh, as we said, we've done a variety of things for you. But I think importantly tonight, you go to that third bullet point. We are going to talk about a strategic plan of finance, really particularly for the first two phases. Phase one, those eminent projects, public safety radio, animal shelter. We certainly are aware of what happened with the singular bid, so we'll talk about that. And I would say for the audience and for y'all, if you should know this, we're not here advocating for projects. That's not our job. Our job is you tell us what we need to do and then we talk about what it's gonna cost, the best ways to do that, and to what extent that may be, uh, you know, more than you can bear. So that's our job, not to say, oh, there's a good project to be done, that's not what we do. The second phase, and we're gonna talk about this as well, courthouse admin facilities. We know where you stand as regard to, uh, judges and what have you. It's very popular for the last, I don't know, maybe 20 years now. People don't want to do courthouses, but they're told they got to. And the, the thing about the judges is they don't really care about what the financial issues are, basically. They just tell you, you gotta get it done for lots of reasons. The third phase is school needs. And we've met, and we had those meetings, you're gonna see how we talk about schools. We don't have a specific year, but we say when you do ultimately decide, we can show you relative costs and equivalent impact to the budget or future budgets. That's how we do that. And then fourth, the landfill, we were asked to, to look at that. And I'm definitely will have RT talk about that, uh, at some point, that's gonna be last. And that's again, something you have to do. So there are the others, like, uh, as Mr. Cottrell said, uh, but these are those that for the moment, will give an order of magnitude to everybody. Okay, so our goals and objectives tonight, um, we want to provide you the necessary information that'll allow you to make well-informed decisions. And I feel like you've seen us before, we're not back of the envelope, we are getting into the weeds. We have purposely tried to get out of the weeds from what we're gonna see tonight. Whole lot behind it that we've worked with, uh, Mr. Cottrell and the folks that work on all this. So we're gonna then give the timeline and plan. Okay, observations.
We're gonna go to page four.
Page four, okay, page four. We know staff worked hard with you to produce a balanced budget in 2024. You reduced operating expenditures, these are some of our highlights and observations. You were able to maintain the tax rate at 48 cents as you go into this revow time period. Again, you did some other things in terms of adjusting some rates. And I think very, very importantly, you created effectively a balanced budget. To be off by 40 or 50,000 dollars on a budget of 48 million dollars is what we consider a balanced budget. That's certainly a rounding error. At last though, which is interesting and important, and this is something that we work into with the staff, you incorporated for the first time a quarter million dollars of debt service for 2024. Whether you need it or not, you put that in there, gonna need it, but we'll talk about what that was to help issue all that first thing. So, um, a couple of other possibilities and points to, you wanna make some more, RT, page five?
Sure, absolutely. So currently, before revow, which we know is in, in process, that each penny on the county's real estate tax rate produces roughly 100,000 dollars in revenue. So each penny of that 48 produces 100,000 dollars. When we go through the revow period, which is what we're in right now, which is required by the Commonwealth of Virginia every six years, we expect to know the actual or closer to actual results by this fall. Prelimarily, and which you'll see in this analysis, is that we've, um, we've received an indication that it might be 30%. So that's what we're gonna base some of these assumptions off of. And so the last bullet there speaks to that 30% increase. And so for budget year, fiscal year 25, we would expect every penny on the real estate dollar to bring in 130,000 dollars. And we wanted to give you some perspective of at least the contiguous counties. And you'll see around the map here, Prince Edward, Charlotte, Lunenburg, Mecklenburg, Brunswick, Greensville, Dinwiddie, and Amelia. We've got all their real estate tax rates listed for you. There's a couple notable points that Prince Edward in particular recently increased their real estate tax rate by four pennies. And they were specifically addressing school and utility needs. And similarly, Brunswick County recently increased their real estate tax rate by 12 pennies. And that was for a combination of capital and operating needs. As far as the overall peer group that we analyzed in our big comprehensive review that we shared with y'all last year, we've got that peer group listed out here in detail. At the very top, for your fiscal year 24 year, you were able to maintain your real estate tax rate at 48 pennies. If you look at the very bottom, we've provided what your potentially equalized rate will be after the reevaluation process. And you can see that 37 pennies on the real estate tax rate would put you at the lowest, um, below the lowest of your median peer group.
Okay, so why don't we turn to page eight, nine, and talk about page one.
Hey, can I get a, want a clarification on something here?
Yes, sir.
Y'all talk about in 25 at 37, at 37 cents. That's just if you equalized at the 30% reassessed, uh, real estate value in order to keep it where it's the same amount of money coming in, you'd have to drop that rate down to 37 cents.
On average, on average. Honestly, and this is always something that happens in every county and city, not everybody gets treated the same.
Right.
Just whether it's businesses, and that's just something that can help, that's just the nature of our, our business system. But that's exactly right.
Thank you.
So you go to page nine, um, what we did is we, you'll see in a moment, we've estimated that if the two costs, animal shelter and the public radio come at 12 million dollars, hard costs. What we said was sometime later this calendar year, we've got about five, six months to do. We're going to both receive and evaluate proposals, those are ongoing. We know that that's been happening and evolving with regard to the public safety radio. The animal shelter came in at 5 million. We assume that when it gets reworked, we move it down to 4 million. Not because we know anything smarter than anybody else, but working with Mr. Cottrell, we will ask probably to have some sort of amendment there. Now, I will say this other thing, we can always change some of these assumptions. This is just an order of magnitude that's important. We're not suggesting that's what it should be. Then, what we see though, is sometime, we're worried that contract's gonna happen sometime by, in the fall, certainly by the wintertime, uh, it's going to take, as you could see here, you know, roughly 12 to eight, 15 months to both design and implement all of these things. And that's very fast. So what we want to do is to make sure that we have funds available, ready to go for these projects. And we're gonna also talk a little bit about why having funds available, how they properly get borrowed, is going to be strategic, and I'll get into that in a minute. So on page 10, as I mentioned, uh, you can see how we got 12 million dollars. And the 12 million was again, the 4 million I alluded to for animal control, that's get rebid probably, and the 8 million for public safety. Now, that's 12 million, however, the grant monies, you're gonna get a million dollars of grants. So the borrowing needs will be 11 million. So we budgeted and did everything based upon 11 million in terms of structuring in that way. Now, for purposes of today, we assume that we would borrow this money over 20 years, this fall, an interest rate of four and a half percent, and that would mean maximum annual debt service when it's maximized, once it ramps up to 850,000 dollars. That's gonna be your bogey, if you would. Now, I'll show you a little bit later, but I'm just, while we've got, the good news here is while we're gonna ramp it up, the 250,000 dollars that's already put into place, so in reality, if you take the 250, less the 850, your challenge going forward is to come up with 600,000 dollars. You don't need it immediately, but you're gonna need it within the next couple of years. So as the revow occurs, the recommendation from us is going to be, like RT alluded to with Prince Edward and the folks at Brunswick and other places, is you set the rate and you adjust it so that you have the equivalent pennies. We're gonna talk about that, what those equivalent pennies are. And we just, for example, right now, with several places, Franklin County, Bedford County, and Campbell County, all three of those, like you, doing capital projects with revow this year, they've done anywhere from three to four to five pennies when they've revowed. And interestingly enough, like you, or at least you're preliminarily, they've all seen about a 30% jump in, in what they've got. So just wherever that's for. Now, the approach, we're gonna talk about that as well, you've got that in the very back, either the Virginia Resource Authority or a direct bank loan. We as your advisor, we don't provide that money, so we don't care which way you do it. All we care about is you get the most cost effective and the most flexible, and we're gonna bid them against each other. That's how we look at this, that's our approach. And then the max debt service, I said earlier, to all of you, starts in FY '26. Think about it, you put 250 away in '24, let's set the funding, and '25 it'll grow, and '26 will be the maximum, needing all that 600,000 on top of the 250. That's how to think about this, okay? It's a lot to take in, but hopefully that's helpful. All right, so page 11. This basically takes that concept one step further. And that is this, what you've done, when I first started talking to you, we talked about what you had in that fund balance, that rainy day fund, you have basically no debt outstanding, almost no debt outstanding, but a really nice fund balance. So that begs the question, do we use a bunch of that fund balance, or do we borrow or do some combination? What we're recommending is we do the following. Of some of the excess fund balances that you've saved over the years, we're gonna recommend that we create a capital reserve fund. And that capital reserve fund will be funded with 5 million dollars in cash from the unassigned fund balance. And we're gonna try to work with staff and with the treasurer to recommend that that 5 million dollars gets put in a fund and the earnings off of that 5 million dollars is usable towards debt service every year.
Yeah, you're talking about treasury note?
We're talking about probably the state program, the local government investment pool.
Okay.
Yes, state, because there's no, there's no, there's no limitation on it, it's not borrowed money. It's, it's your money right now. And it's money that's over and above what is asked of the treasurer to use to pay bills. You've got enough money sitting there that you don't need all of that money to pay bills in a given year, in a cycle, if you would.
And of course, we haven't seen this yet, so that's the reason why I'm asking this question. But do you have a projection on what that would grow?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
May I ask a question?
Of course, yes.
If you, if excess unassigned dollars by million are removed from the current general fund, so then if we, when we go to borrow, is there an impact on your financial statements as far as a creditor?
We'll show you, that's a great question. That's common, that's common, it's a really good question, so we'll talk about that. So the last point here though, is that at those monies, that 5 million, right now, with overnight monies that the state invests in local governments, that's the local government investment pool, right now is earning 5.3% overnight.
Good deal. Good deal.
It's a great deal. And it's all government, US government-backed obligations. So there's billions of dollars in local governance in there. And you may even ask someone, I don't really know. Here's the point, that alone is going to be enough to produce about 250,000 dollars plus a year. So that 250, the existing 250, what it then means is that you need the equivalent then of three pennies with the revow. So think of it this way, if, as RT said, it was down to 37%, 37 cents, we would need to go back, not to 37, to 40. And those three pennies would be dedicated to take care of this whole first phase. That's, that's basically how to get there. And that's how we work with you and your neighbors, whether it's the Palatans of the world or whatever. And that's how that works. Now, we're gonna get to your question, Mr. Cottrell, in a minute, how this looks, because it's a really important question. So let's go to that page, page one, all right? Nothing better than showing you how to compare to your neighbors and national averages in Virginia. So right now, at the end of your 22 cap, because that's what we have right now, your fund balance, that unassigned, those monies that we're talking about, is equal to 75% of a whole year's revenues. If we take 5 million out, you're still close to 50%. And that's assuming there's nothing added to it in '23 or at all, okay? So how does that compare? When we go back towards that almost 50%, we are still above Virginia budget peers, Virginia population peers, the regular, the, the region, the regional, you're right there in line with the regional, as you can see, in the light blue. You're way ahead of the national, and when you take the entire state of Virginia out of the world, you're way above. So you look, again, when you even go back to there, it's still a very big credit strength. That's the point. There's a way to use this money smartly and not use it up, but to take advantage of that, okay? Any likes of things?
Yes, I'm sorry. Could I ask for clarification? I'm not sure I followed. So 75% of revenue, so this 5 million is 75% of?
We're gonna show you the next page.
Okay.
Yes, one more quick question. The 5 million needs to stay there for the, for the 20 years, is that correct?
Probably, well, the word has to. You're gonna have to figure out, let's assume we used it for something else a year later. You're gonna have to figure out how to figure annual earnings of about 250,000 dollars.
Okay, yeah, so if we poured a million out of that, we got, it's gonna be a loss of some. You know, we're roughly 50,000 dollars. We'd have to find that revenue stream somewhere else, okay?
Now, interestingly enough though, what I think's gonna happen, well, again, the answer's yes.
Okay.
But you're not locked into that, okay? You know, you could, but that's the way to think about it.
This is another nasty.
So if we put it in, let's say, 5 point whatever percent, you know, if rates go up, what could, can the principal possibly be impacted?
No, so, so great question, no. So the way the, the, that, that works, um, no, that's not like a bond fund. No, it's not a bond fund. It is actually, you're earning, it's like you having cash, it's cash in an account, and you're earning that, like this particular week, it's 5.3%. Next week, it could be 5.1%. So for that week and that dividing, you know, behind.
So we're never at a point of an unrealized loss?
No.
And this is fully government backed?
Exactly right. It's a great program, been in place with the state and Commonwealth for decades. No one has ever lost any money, either the local government investment pool. Now, you look at the VML VACO pool, which is a bond fund, that's very different, that's not government-backed, that's not something we're recommending.
That's your cities and towns, more or less, anyway, right?
Yes, but that's exactly right. But that's really a private entity.
Okay.
Even though they use the term, they use the name VML and VACO, you might think it's a not-for-profit, it's not.
Well, that's the reason why I, I mentioned it, the treasurer's simple because I know only what, at the school thing, that looked like that's where we were probably going, it's one of the safest bets anyway.
Meaning the LGIP.
So is this in treasuries in this fund? It is.
Exactly right.
It's a, but typically treasuries, if you invest in treasuries at a certain rate, and then the Fed hikes rates on your financial statement.
That's not how your money, so what happens is, no, it's not, it's not gonna happen. That's not how you and other local governments are treated in that fund. What happens is, it is basically you, whatever that, let's assume rates go higher. And then, or rates go lower, I should say, you know? And so as a result, the yields go down in that. So what'll happen is that, let's say that next week, or it takes a while, that next week, you might, instead of earning on that money for that week, instead of 5.3%, it can go down to 2.3%. It's not gonna move that fast, but that's the idea, right? But you're never losing what you made the previous week. That's the difference. But you're not losing anything from the previous week.
The principal is never impacted. Never a chance of any kind of?
Right, and don't take my, that's the beauty of, yeah. We're not, it's not our program, it's just, that's the beauty of this, it's really.
It can take these, and if we invest in these, can it come back to our local banks in any way, shape, or form to help them grow as well? I mean, if we can invest local, I mean?
Well, here, here's what, here's what typically happens for, let's assume that you put the 5 million with the state.
Okay.
And you're hoping that you need to get out of that, let's say, your goal is to get 250,000 a year out of that. Right now, because you have 5 million, let's say it's 5.3%, you get a little more of that. Well, you can do what you want, you can let the size of the principal grow, or you could take some of that out and then put it in some of the local banks. From my perspective, if one of the local banks is willing to say, and they might, you know, you know what? We'll guarantee, let's say, for the next year, that we'll give you a 5% return.
My next question, would you, which way would you go?
I think I'd like to.
If it's in the bank, it's fully collateralized, public fund.
Public or less.
But do you think diversification is still?
Yeah, I would never want, we always tell our clients, don't go put all your money in one entity, that's never a good idea for anybody. So the idea, because let's face it, you've got a fair amount of cash. Again, this is 5 million, it goes from 75 to 46, you still have a lot of other dollars.
Yeah.
And some of those other dollars you need though, in your, in your cash flows in a given year. So, but there's still more dollars that you don't actually tap into in a given year. And so, for example, maybe that's the kind of money that goes to the LGIP, maybe it goes to one or two banks, you know? It's, that's your call.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, is anything the county can do to invest back locally, that's?
Yeah, so I just think it's a combo. So you can, you can take, and again, it's, it's year to year, like right now, the reason why a good local bank would make, would do that, and some are doing that for different people, is because they know that they can turn around and they're gonna get more than 5% sitting on your money, and they'll give you 5%. They're happy, they like the deposits, and they locked in, I mean, why not?
Right.
That's, that's from my perspective.
Okay.
So it's an important concept. Now, the other thing is too, what happens, you might say, what happens if rates go way down? Well, chances are if rates go way down, two things will happen. One is the debt that we borrowed, got a pretty good chance of refinancing that and bringing those rates down lower. That's one possibility. And number two, if those rates go lower, okay, and we need less on debt service, then, you know, our need for all that 250 will mitigate somewhat. But again, uh, we'll see, you know, you never, never know.
Right.
On the worst case, here's the other thing, that 5 million sitting there, if we want to, that could always be used to pay down some debt. There's no prohibition on that, okay? But what it doesn't make sense in this environment is to go immediately to take your 5 million and just make the borrowing, instead of 11 million, make it like 6 million. That's, that's not a good use of your money.
Okay.
Because you're better off having a stronger balance sheet, and you're better off, in case something does happen, a problem in a couple of years, you're better off sitting on that roughly 5 million dollars. If you have to use some of that towards debt service or towards operations, even though you don't want to, you're still in a better position.
So would you still feel the same way if we were back in the much lower rate environment where we would be, um, earning 1% on money in a bank or an investment and then paying above that to borrow? Would you still say that we ought to?
That's a hard question. So chances are, if that were the case, like it was like 18 months ago, instead of, I'd use with RT, 4.5% borrowing, then it was 2.5% borrowing.
Right.
So if we said, all right, mostly earned maybe with the bank is 1%, the difference is one and a half. But this is interesting to ask that, when I look at my 40-plus years of doing this, on average, that money sitting there has always earned a much better rate than 1% on average. So I, and I did, so I probably would've said, hang on to your money, invest it, same way, chances are rates are gonna go up, you'll be happier, because you've locked in your 2.5% borrowing money.
Right.
So those that have actually listened to us that way are feeling good today. You know, they may have had a little negative carry, as we call it, for a year, a year and a half. But now, they're sitting there going, I've got my 5 million earning 5.5%, and my cost of money is 2.5%, if not lower.
Right.
And they're feeling good about it, because you, like I said. So that's a good theoretical or hypothetical question, but I probably would, now, one more thing. For you, I would have probably recommended that, but if you were somebody that had a lot of debt outstanding, no. So it's all a matter of, you're not the same county as somebody, let's say, next to you or near you, because if someone's got more higher amount of debt, I would probably say, let's, let's minimize amount of new borrowing. We do, but for you, the problem here is you got out of whack. But for you, the problem here is you got out of whack. You were basically doing everything pay-go or doing nothing and having no debt outstanding in your budget. And we talked about that. That's why your facilities are all, you need to all do all this stuff in the next five or 10 years. So there's a balance. We want to use debt not as a crutch, but as a tool. That's, that's the key. And that's how we look at it. That's why we have policies that we want to set up and all that. So again, this is the question. You are, if you do this, you remain as strong as anybody. And that's important. And that's really important. So Archie, why don't you walk me through the next page 13 that short?
So how, how do we create that capital reserve fund? At your fiscal year, 2022 year end, you had $13.2 million in unassigned fund balance. That's that flexible pot of money that is at 75% of your general fund revenues. If we take and reallocate under step one here, that five million dollars that David was talking about to that capital reserve, that leaves you still $8.2 million in unassigned fund balance, which is 46 or close to 50% of your general fund revenues. And to, to your question earlier, that $8.2 million can be, you know, deposited here in the county at other financing institutions or other places. So that still leaves you $8.2 million in unassigned fund balance. Then again, number two, that's where we allocated the $5 million over from unassigned fund balance to create that capital reserve. And that's our, part of our overall funding strategy for funding phase one. And then step three here is still trying to determine if those LRA pot of monies could be flexible enough to use toward future programming. We're still working on that with that.
We've not counted.
But we have not.
That's what I was going to add. That 5.2 for the LRA, it's not part of the 8.2.
Correct. It's completely separate and apart. It has not been factored into anything else that you see. We just wanted to mention that to address it.
Okay, no problem. Thanks for pointing.
All right, so keep going, Archie.
Sure. So strategically investing that capital reserve fund, I think David mentioned this a minute ago. This is just showing you the map behind the, the potential earnings we have to create a couple pennies equivalent of dollars to be programmed in capital program and going forward. So $5 million times that, when we did this, was 5.2%. Obviously, that rate's gone up for this week. That equates to roughly $260,000 in annual interest earnings. And if we can program that, that's, gives us that additional two pennies to go toward debt service.
Okay, so let's go to page 15. And this is that summary photo, not photo, but sort of visual. It said, of that 850 I said you needed, that would be 6.5 penny equivalent. However, you've already got the 250 built in. We see the real estate rebound, the three penny impact would be worth about $400,000 if you use that, if you can do that. And then we said, if we used and needed just $200,000, we didn't need 260, for example. We needed the equivalent of a penny amount. Does that make sense? So already, go to your point, Shackleford. If we can earn 5.2 or 5.3, we have more earnings than we actually need in a given year. And some years might go the other way. You know, some years you might have, let's say we need 200,000, but let's say the earnings go to 140 or something like that. We need 200,000. So that's why that account at five million, we keep, we wouldn't keep taking it, everything out. We just let it grow. And that's the idea. But to your point, like I said, we can have bond council underscore this. It's not a bond fund. So it's not like it changes value going down or up every day. Only down. That's the important thing. Can't go down. It's like, again, think of it as you having a savings account at the bank, which you are a banker, and they say, fine. And most times you're earning, let's say, 1%. You don't care if, you're not in, your principal's not at risk, is my point. It's not a money market. Not a money market.
Is the 250 that we're putting in a debt service, is that something that is expected to be done each year?
What's already there, baked into your budget?
I'm talking about this, this coming year, yes.
It's already there.
Okay, but is, are we putting that in?
So for example, here's how governments work that have material amount of debt. They, let's say, they have a line item. It's like schools have a line item. They've got a line item that's for debt. And remember, we showed you when I, when RT and I were in front of the school board and y'all, we said, remember here, look, a lot of these places have, let's say I'm calling them here, like a million dollars a year of debt service. You had almost none. So they've already baked into their future budgets, $1 million for debt service every year, whatever. That's, that's the idea here.
It's almost like the initial muscle memory.
Yeah. Because, because the idea is your existing tax structure in this budget that's balanced already has that 250. We hit that in.
Right. And the reason why I ask this is because part of balance in the budget, we had to go into the general fund.
But you also, some of that general fund that you went into were some capital needs and some other things, but you set a line item in there for debt service. That's, that was, we confirmed that.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't want to be continuously going into the general fund.
And of course, the, it was 40,000, I think, that we could balance. We had to go into the general fund. But that does not incorporate salary increases.
That's right.
That's correct.
And that could impact this of what you're getting shown.
And it will, that's still pending. And that might be something that we have to make an adjustment on how much you have in, in this set aside.
Do you have a rough estimate on that?
I have a calculation. And so that brings a great point. So what we've done, like last year at this time, you're just one year behind, you know, to their timing. Like Scott County, what they had was, although they had some debt service already, but the point is, they had a 30% jump. But to balance their budget, really balance their budget going forward, they needed also salary increases and health increases. They needed like the equivalent of like 10 to 12 pennies because they couldn't go down. Yeah, they need a lot. They were, they had a real big shortfall in there going in. So again, that's part of why when you do the rebound and this, that, the timing for you is actually good because when you think about it, you're going to have a good handle on the 24 and into 25 budget this fall into, end of fall, roughly December, January. At that point, when you set the new tax rate, that'll be critical to set that tax rate so those extra dollars are there to really have balance going into 25, we are. That's, that's the challenge. So let's assume Ted says, I'm just going, he didn't tell us anything. I'm just saying, the example, he said, well, you know what? We need 500,000 extra dollars over the, what I showed in 24. As RT said, 130,000 rounding off, that might be the equivalent of three, three and a half pennies, forgetting the tax, debt service, just for operations. And that's how you, you'll, so what I think is going to end up happening on a certain way is when you do the rebound, start at 37, or whatever, it's 30%. You start at 37 and you say, okay, what do we need going forward to really balance the budget? So you don't do what you just said. You said, no, no, using general fund one-time dollars to balance your recurring budget. The other recommendation we make, and it's not in here per se, is don't wait every six years. I mean, you can, but I don't think that's a very good time. I think four years at most. And a lot of folks your size will go to four years, some two or three. Obviously, not every year. That's big, big folks like Chesterfield have a whole operation. But something like four is probably enough in a cycle. You know, because it cuts both ways. You might all of a sudden have the rebound done in a particularly bad year or particularly good year, depending on how, what the environment is. So, okay?
What would you say most localities are doing? Now, take out the big ones, but are most going to four? I know most, the regional conversation has been, we need to go to four.
And that's exactly my number. Not too frequent, but it's, but it's definitely, six is, is too much of a decade.
I mentioned this in the conversation with some folks last night, that, you know, anytime the local governments need additional money, they'll tend to go to reassessments now, simply because it's a way to say, well, look, that's just what the values are. We didn't raise your tax. You know, it's just, it, but those services are increasing. Fire, rescue, plant fields.
You know, again, I, I think what unfortunately people have to understand is you don't control some of these things. I mean, the citizens have to understand that you don't have an ability to not do public radio. You don't have an ability not to do the courthouse. You know, they want to do that, but go talk to the judge. The judge will tell them, do back, you know? That's the way it works. I mean, they try to do everything they can, but between security and all the expectations, that's just, and you know, administrative wise, you don't meet any DAD requirements. I mean, you know, you set yourself up for real lawsuits and then you get nothing out of it. So it, it is, again, a lot of people just don't understand that you're not doing luxury here. You don't have to projects. And some people just never buy that, but that's the facts. Is what it is. Okay, all right. So again, let's, let's talk a little bit about dual track approach. Maybe 17, I'm sorry. So what we, RT and I told Ted when we met with him a couple of weeks ago in anticipation of all this, is we should do what we call a dual track approach. Number one, we go and we talk competitively to direct banks. So you, to your point, local banks, they want to be a participant. We go to those banks. Now, 11 million dollars thereabouts is a lot of money. Some of the banks can't quite do that. There's no reason why it can't be broken up into a couple pieces, meaning they can do part, another bank they can partner with. You know, we see that fairly regularly. Okay, on that. Then gosh, twice. If two banks can get together, fine. All right, that's called syndication. They syndicate to, you know, if they want to do it. That's one approach. And we recommend doing that because then every bank on a date certain tells us what they're willing to do, what the rates are, the terms and everything that are fixed for a period of time. So this body here can evaluate.
So our interest dollars would be staying local?
Well, yes. If, but, but, but I want to be careful here. But what we've not seen of them is the direct bank loan being as competitive.
I understand, I understand. If, if it falls correctly, then our interest dollars would be staying local.
Or, but then we call a dual track. We want to get y'all's blessing to go to VRF, which is state program. And we work with the state program now for decades and say, okay, we won't apply. Now, it doesn't cost us anything to apply. But if we ultimately use the state program, they basically go to market sometime in the fall. Usually RT, what, October, November?
Mid, mid to late October is when they lock it. They sell the bonds, they lock in your interest rate. And then a few weeks later, in early to mid-November, your bond proceeds are available to you to spend on your project or reimburse yourselves for expenditures you've already expended.
So that's the alternative. Now, the beauty of the R A is that you're borrowing basically on the state credit. So it's almost a triple A rating is what you're borrowing. In fact, you can't get much, any better than their rates. So that's a good situation. But again, they may not even approve you. They may not even say yes to you as a loan. I think they will, but it's something that doesn't happen. So in either of these approaches, what we want to try to do is to give you the good and the bad and evaluate it. Now, we apply. If they tell us, okay, we apply, and then we have meetings with them, VRA. If they give us the go-ahead, usually it happens sometime, probably in mid-September. So they'll say, okay, we've accepted you. And what they try to do is put you in a pool with other local governments. That's what, it's called a pool program. And they do that normally twice a year, in the fall and the spring. This is called the fall borrowing, even though you start in the summertime. Okay? Again, we're indifferent, but we would basically know if they say yes, we would have in hand what maybe the direct banks are. Now, I think the banks are going to be higher than 4.5%. I think they're going to be probably in the 3s, that range, okay? Now, some advantages and disadvantages possibly, depending on what we get. Usually the banks have what you call a call feature that's more flexible. Meaning if rates do come down, it's easier to refinance that. Usually it'd be done faster than the VRA. It's got a 10-year call. It's a fancy way of saying you're kind of locked out for 10 years. But I mean, they can't refund it early if you don't give them benefits for a few years. So we'll present that to you, give you the pros and cons, and then you will decide. We may give it some breaks, we may make a recommendation, but we'll give it to you and that's, you do what you, you want to do. But that would be the approach.
Yes, great question. So if we go to the VRA and we get this, in this full financing and the funds become available to us, at the point they become available, are we starting to pay interest on those funds? Even if it's before we actually need the funds?
So what happens is exactly so. Think of it just like the capital reserve. And there's another state program called SNAP, State Non-Arbitrage Program. That's also, also treasuries. That's also available, literally overnight monies. And that's also yielding in the mid-fives. Because it's the same, it's really the same program, only it's borrowed funds. And so the same idea. Let's assume that with VRA, we were fortunate to get an all in interest rate at 4.5%. Those monies, if they, they can turn around and get us 5.5%, the difference is that one extra percent we have to give back to the government in several years. Not up to the 4.5%, but anything over and above. That's why it's called a non-arbitrage. So the idea is not a penalty. It's just we can, as we're sitting, waiting to spend the money, if you're not spending it fast, because chances are you won't, you bet it that fast, we're earning interest against the cost of money.
So our borrowed money would go into the SNAP program at a higher rate than what we're paying on it. we're paying on it, but while it's in the SNAP program, is there any chance of, is this fully secured also, has no chance of the principal?
Also, same concept.
Okay.
That's the beauty of that.
That's what I was asking, quite.
Yeah. But the point is, let's assume again, it's above the cost of money. You just have to give them back at a certain time, the difference in the extra dollars. You're not losing anything, you still get to keep that extra, let's say one percent. You don't give it, as they call it, arbitrage. Now, I'm not quite exactly true. If you were spending the money very, very fast, there's a sort of, these, these spend out, you can keep extra dollars, but I don't see you spending it that fast. I don't see it that fast. So make believe you're not going to get anything over the cost of money.
Ted, you mentioned, you mentioned paying yourself back for what you already expended. You've been, how far back can that go?
Great question. So do we have a reimbursement resolution in place yet?
We can get one in place.
Okay. Because what you're allowed to do, and I'm not a lawyer, but do it so well, you can go back sixty days, no matter what, that's not a lot. Uh, but you can also go back a little further of certain expenditures.
Okay.
But that's why you just want to get reimbursement resolution. Bond Council puts that together, it takes, it's a one pager, it's very simple, doesn't make you have to reimburse yourself for dollars that you cut out of pocket, but it gives you that opportunity. It's all good.
Sands has, Sands has been waiting to pull the trigger.
Yeah.
Uh, that's what we need to get to.
Right.
We're just at this point here, because I was thinking, depending on how far back we regularly are, have paid architectural fees.
Right.
Shelter.
Do you know that answer? I don't, I can't remember, does architectural fees go back?
I don't.
Let's not, we don't really, I don't really, I don't want to give you that. That's why we always, early on, say get a reimbursement resolution and clears up any uncertainty. Okay, that's how it works. And again, the reason people do that, the theory, because let's assume you use out of your fund balances half a million dollars. So, well, you are going to be taking that and reimbursing yourself, and you can earn five percent, that's not borrowed, you know, five percent, and then in turn, you reimburse yourself for saying five percent you can earn, and it costs you four and a half percent to have that money, you're better off. Just, that's just good math. That's the way it works. If it was the other way around, you probably wouldn't do it. You know, that's, you'd say, okay, well, that's something you can do. You don't have to make that decision now, but you should get the resolution. So really, that's, that's the whole proxy of phase one. That's, that's important. So let's go, RT, why don't you go to phase two, on page nineteen?
So we, David alluded to it earlier, um, we are in a position where we need to conduct the needs analysis for the courthouse facilities.
And not we, but you.
We, the county, sorry.
I apologize. I like, I like the team approach a lot.
So the county is in a position where it needs to conduct the needs analysis, um, and that can begin, and we, we have here, based on our conversations with staff, that that would be roughly a one-year process, estimated to start the summer twenty twenty-three, and could be concluded by, you know, roughly the same time next year. So that's about a one-year process, so nothing immediately, except just to get that process going and get the needs analysis conducted. So after that, fast forward a year, um, based on that needs analysis, then the design work could come into play, and that would take another year. So we'd still be two years away potentially from even getting to a bid process. For that, for that would be sometime in calendar year twenty-five, and you're already into your fiscal year twenty-six by then. You go through that bid process in the summer of twenty twenty-five, uh, takes about six months roughly, and then award the contract for construction that would commence sometime toward the, call it early, early to mid calendar year twenty twenty-six. So by the summer of twenty twenty-five, the winter of twenty-six, you've got all the sort of the process wrapped up, and then that's when you would potentially need to borrow funds, and then you're, so you're a few years away from needing the borrowing and paying any related debt service on it. So you've got time between now and then to conduct all this analysis and get things in place before you would actually have to start coming out of your budget for any related debt or debt service.
Yeah, taking a step further, there's going to be some costs that you'll have, designing, paying, what have you. You've got a couple of choices in doing that, which you can do is, that you can have some of those extra dollars that you've got in your fund balance, and then you can reimburse yourself a couple, three years later, one approach. Second approach, you might do some interim financing. Really, it's a, it's a decision you can make roughly about a year from now, and you don't need to make that decision. That's, that's a ways off, okay? So, yes.
So these projections, are they made assuming what extent, or is this the whole, the entire complex, right?
Maybe you should address that.
Well, first off, we've got the, the judges, we discussed this yesterday, we've, we've got the judges', uh, list of items. The assessment is really kind of already started. Uh, I'll be reporting in the budget next, in the budget packing next week. State lease has come in and done a security assessment. They haven't given us the final report, and they don't do a price tag, they just tell us what it is. We're trying to find somebody to come in and do an ADA assessment. So what we're looking at is primarily, we're focusing on the court complex, but as you know, the board, some prior years, did a facility study, you know? Um, that's another piece that's on, on, on there. And then property was bought over, um, the Pully property was bought, uh, with the concept of maybe, I'm, I'm not really quite sure yet, uh, the sheriff's office over there with the county administration building, and then using that space needs thing. So it's looking at the whole complex, it's not just looking at the courthouse.
Well, one of the things that, I don't know if y'all even took, it, it may be out of purview here, but, all right, the radio tower going up, seven million dollar project, okay? How much is it going to cost to move that if we relocate the sheriff's office in a different spot?
Well, that's one of those things where, where that, where, I'm looking over the semester, Hyde, looking over the top of the computer screen, that's where you go back to that first project, and that's where that needs assessment, that, that project is going full, full white nail. It could be that, um, there is no tower on the site, on this, on the, the complex. It could be completely taken out, we don't know yet. It could be, it could be tucked into a corner.
Yeah.
And, and connected.
Because my concern is, like I said, it, it's, it's one thing, I mean, granted, they could always come up and build from it out, right? But if it's going to move, is there a cost in it? I mean, well, surely there will be a cost in it. If it's a hundred thousand dollars, that's not one of them. If it's cost a million dollars to move the system, I mean, I will be all about, let's draft some plans for the sheriff's department right now and do this thing in conjunction with their radio tower.
And that's an option, so you, you're actually then looking at maybe phasing this project.
Yes.
Um, one, one factor has been if the tower stays, and it would be ideal if it could go to a monopole and get rid of the, the cable support wires. That opens up a lot of space, uh, in terms of usable space in, on, on the complex. One thought has been, keep the nine-one-one dispatch center where it is, but expand it through that building, and then have the sheriff's office somewhere else. There are so many options, that's where you have to go in and get your, your, your needs analysis done.
I think you bring up a good point. This would be critical to have some planning ahead and coordination of this before you invest all the funds and placing.
Towers and, yeah. And, but again, we may not even need a tower. Mr. Hyde, you want to jump in real quick?
Yeah, I can. So, so some of the discussions that we've had, um, in our tower, in our planning for the radio system and the proposal, is that if a freestanding tower is erected, uh, which is one recommendation at the sheriff's office to replace this very old and very, you know, sort of eyesore tower we have now, is that we position it behind the complex so that if a new building is erected, you're only looking at probably one hundred and fifty to three hundred feet difference, so it's ma, it's a matter of just tunneling over to the new building. So there's no movement of the tower. We would, we would strategically place the tower for the future, it's good for the next fifty years, knowing that a building could go up. That's, that's the simple approach here.
Yes.
And then you just tunnel over, and it'd be a minimal cost, and maybe the tunneling over to the new building would be incorporated in the cost of the new building. There you go. That's, that's pretty much the.
Yeah, that works.
Yep.
So I, I think what we wanted to show you then, let's look on page one. So there's certain funding options that are and are not available that makes sense because you're going to do a courthouse administration, so this collapse is ridiculous. So our thinking was, again, this RT set the construction timeframe, roughly thirty-six months, but what we'd recommend looking at is rule development, USDA, it's the same thing, rule development. They're a pain in the neck in some ways, but they're very good in others. We use the planning rate of three seventy-five. Right now, their, their, their rates are like three and a quarter, three percent, we just, then work with a lot of things, but that's fine. Go to, let's use that rate. When you use that rate and you assume what we did, um, it is about a million four sixty. So basically, it's a million and a half dollars under this approach roughly per year, once it really kicks into full gear by the end of the decade. So let's do our same approach, which is page twenty-one. Good or bad, this is what it roughly requires, starting in FY twenty-six, half-year interest only, because, and what we're doing, by the way, the reason we've done this for y'all, this is the way rule development requires the funding to be set up. It's not just how we want to do it this way, this is how they dictate the way it works. So we don't, I'm rounding off here, we don't about five fifty, five fifty, and then three thirty, you know, each of those years accumulates. So we're going to need about eleven pennies. Now, go back to what I'd said earlier, what you'd said earlier, Mr. Orick and others, if you are looking at rebalance every four years, okay? So we're doing the rebounds right now, it's the, effectively, it's FY, you know, twenty-three slash twenty-four. Four years later, we're basically at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It's almost right there as the next rebound is coming, just around that time. So you could be in a mode where they say, well, I don't have rebalance occur until twenty-seven, right? But we need some money in twenty-six. That's where you can turn around and say, okay, we're going to purposely use a half a million dollars from unassigned fund balance or that capital reserve. That's a, relatively speaking, you've got eight million plus five million plus what maybe another five million, I'm not counting it. I'm not that worried about coming up with a half a million dollars.
Yeah, good.
You know, you've got a couple of years to think about. But what you will have is that equivalent is going to be real dollars that you're going to have to figure out coming into that next rebound. And the thing about that is, goes back to, we don't count economic development projects that haven't happened, you know, there's a lot of talk about solar and other things. Well, my perspective is, right now, none of that exists. So being careful and cautious, it's something that this board or future board, after we get phase one done, is going to be, I think, the easy one, that's easy. But it's really how you get yourself positioned with the second phase, that's a big deal.
Can I, can I ask you this? I got, I'm trying to figure this out, forgive me, but, all right, so the second phase is forty years, but does this second phase, is this including the debt from phase one as well? So it's not additional debt?
No, it is, it is. Now, this first phase, we're done, you needed that extra six hundred thousand dollars. Now you need an extra million for it. Yes, you need an extra million for it, that's right.
So within two to three years, we're essentially needing.
Well, not two to three years, no, well, two, well, maybe two to four years, actually.
Well, yeah. But we're talking, we got to come up with two million dollars per year.
A million four sixty. Plus the other million?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
So, so this, in this.
Yeah, but again, you've already got that.
So four point, it's four point five. So it's three pennies to you. But what, what, what Mr. Rose is saying is you're staggering that over the, the years as opposed to, and I don't need to water, you know, critical, but rather than hitting twelve cents a week, you're building up. So your building is incremental.
Now, so you got, you got a real challenge here to get to that phase two. Phase one, again, within the realm of that, that's very, very doable, and I know that, that's really, that's fine, but phase two is, is a mountain to climb.
So when you're looking at phase two, is USDA as central source of funding? Is USDA, is the VRA for phase one more viable option than USDA?
Yeah, so USDA will not make sense for that. That's just paying a lot of extra dollars. And then the way, the way it's set up, that's not really in there, that's, that's just not, you're really too far down the path anyway, but we, you can't, the problem is, USDA sets it up, they can take shorter, but the point is, they're really, all the amount of work that they require to get it done, it's not easy, it's really a forty-year program. And so you're looking at, when we're financing the, the first phase, we're amortizing that a lot faster than forty years. You, you, you could never responsibly do a radio system, it's only going to last for fifteen years, not out at, at forty years, that's, that's not, right, responsible.
Well, David, is there something about population? Is this the USDA that I may be thinking about? And it's like, the population's under twenty thousand, fifteen thousand?
Communities, facilities, grants, and I was getting to ask, what's the potential of us getting?
It could be very good, but again, purposely, again, that will come over time. We were, Ted and I talked about, we'd love to see, because here's the point, that thirty million is not our number, it was just a general swag to say, okay, I mean, it's easy, it could possibly be, what you want to do could be forty million, maybe you get some grant monies, maybe you don't. So we just wanted to say, look, that's what I said earlier, this number is just an order of magnitude, phase two, and a general timing. So you now know that under a rule development approach, it's our interest rates, it's about a million and a half dollars to get thirty million bucks. It's a way to think about it, that's how to generally think about it. Now, VRA is an option, they only go out thirty years, okay? And they're market-driven. Again, we're indifferent, so that would be your million four, under VRA, even higher. So, you know, but then again, like I say, the beauty of rule development, a courthouse lasts for, as you know, you know, your hope is it's going to last seventy, sixty, seventy years, you know, that kind of thing.
But am I accurate, this, for forty years, you're looking at sixty million payback on thirty million?
Yep, that's right.
I'm pulling Fred Sanford here, I'm going to have a heart attack.
But then again, think about it, if you have a mortgage, it's no different.
Yeah. But it's taxpayers' money, I mean, that's.
But it is, but here's another thing too, now, you're asking, the problem with just all of a sudden taking your cash, is that's not fair to future taxpayers, because then they're not paying their proportionate share over time. So the idea is, those that are living in the county are paying for it as they're getting that benefit of the courthouse over the next twenty, thirty, forty years. That's really, you know, it's a fairness issue. But then again, like, like I said, um, even the wealthiest counties don't go pay the cash for courthouse, it's all, it's all proportionate.
We do a thing virtual and by email, we do it without helping, we don't need to brick and mortar.
Roughly required, it's interesting, it's funny you say that, there are certain things we do know about, and you are required to have, at least, well, legislature's there nowadays, you obviously have to have that. You're required to brick and mortar, obviously jails and all that, but no, you, like, you know, doing trials and all that stuff are all required. It's just, we weren't allowed about that, people ask, you know, the only thing that ever asked about that, sort of virtual learning and all that, yeah. So, so I don't want to overdo it, but that's, this is a big, you know, now, let me see, one last thing, and then we'll be done, and I'll ask RT, who just talked about, maybe some timetakers, but I'm, please, don't forget, you'll notice we did here, okay, this is, this is hopefully helpful, a little bit of what we saw last time we were in front of the schools. Every need's not all the same. So you have the ability, under the new, uh, government structure in Richmond, you can borrow a lot of money, upwards of twenty-five to thirty million dollars roughly, but these details, act up to thirty years at two percent guaranteed rate of money, okay? And that's assuming, by the way, that you get no grant money spread for this, we purposely put that aside, because that could happen to you. But let's assume though, here's the point, if and when you need some school monies, capital monies, that are eligible, if, you, you could look at this, this is the way to think about it for your board, you could borrow upwards of, have about ten million dollars of hard dollars, and that cost annually would be about five hundred thousand dollars. That's basically how that works, because of that two percent money that you get. You can't get two percent money for public safety radio, you can't get it from the animal shelf, you can't get it from the courthouse, it's a special program called the literary loan program. And, uh, that's, that's a program that was enhanced, as I mentioned to y'all, when we were here in front of the schools that Governor Yonkin, this administration and this legislature really put into place last year, so it's in place.
I can hear that.
We'll do this anyway. And, but, but interestingly enough, before, you were locked into no more than seven and a half million at the two percent, up to twenty years, it was front loaded. Now, this is no longer front loaded, it's more levelized like a typical mortgage, which is really helpful. So that's a great program, is a great program, and the way you borrow it, we don't give details, but, so again, think of it as, if the schools say, we've got ten million, remember when we were sitting there with them, they had talked about some safety equipment, some other things, maybe it was staggered over a few years, fine, then you could borrow in staggered as well, and again, maybe there's some grant dollars, because there are grant dollars, but they have to apply. But the point is, it's, it's nice to know that, again, going back to your equivalent penny, for five hundred thousand dollars, equivalent penny, let's say, three, three and a half pennies, you can get about ten million dollars of school needs taken care of, that's pretty serious.
But with this program here, and here, Mr. Vaughn, fix it together, hold on, Mr. Vaughn, do we have to allocate these funds to the school, or can we oversee the project?
No. Well, the word oversee the project, I'm not an expert on that side, I can't tell you that much, but you know how that works. But the point is, at the end of the day, you're really, you, you ultimately are giving money to the schools, meaning annual monies. They'll use some of those monies to pay the debt service, so you can pay the debt service. Different local governments that we work with do it different ways, but it's done in collaboration with each other. I mean, that's, that's it. At the end of the day, you know, it's, you've got to raise the equivalent of, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars, and then that goes to, and go to them, and then goes to debt service. I think that's, that's just on the capital side, but that's, so, yeah. And then I think lastly, I don't know if there's an appetite for this, but, um, you go to page twenty-six, RT, just be brief on this. you go to page twenty-six. Artie, just be brief on this, if you don't mind, just give them a whole lot to digest.
The upside is that, working with staff and their consultants, we, we have a few options to analyze regarding, so the landfill and you've got, you're on cell number five, you're permitted for only one more, that's all the space will hold. And so the determining factors try to get us down to, where do we go with our options? And do we sell it? Do we get out of the landfill business, or do we keep going? That's what's currently being assessed. So we're working up. More to come on that.
It's ways, it's ways down the road, but not that far down the road.
Right.
So I think the biggest challenge is gonna be how to really set that reval rate so that you have sustainable revenues operations-wise for the next four years, and you have debt service, especially for phase one, and maybe even some seeding money for phases of two, or schools, or other things, that's your call.
He would, it would seem to be a lot.
It is a lot, there's no doubt about it.
Some of y'all smiling, knowing you ain't gonna have to worry about this a little bit.
Do you believe that?
I said, I'm retired at the right time. We are retiring this coming.
And just page thirty-one has the schedule for this phase one, that we would ask y'all to, to give us, working with staff and go if you're going. So for example, on thirty-one, the, if you do action, we would start putting something together here in early July. We hope to get something back in, well, in August, mid-August, probably. UVA, August seventeenth. If you still do, we probably could add some knowledge back from the banks. This is page thirty-one, as you all know. And then that would be one piece. We'd get the application of VRA. They'll, uh, the board to, to approve a resolution that you're looking at VRA, doesn't make you have to go through them, but you gotta do that. We'll get that on the calendar. And like I said, we basically could be in a mode by mid to latter part of August, not very far from now, to know what banks are willing to do, if anything. And then what we think VRA might do, because again, rates don't change. They go up, they go down, so it'll be interesting. See what happens and see what your thinking is. But that's really where we stand. So even if this were to get pushed for, let's say, a year, which I don't recommend it, but let's say it got pushed for a year, you still gotta put in your rebound, you gotta get those pennies in. It doesn't matter. You can't, you can't avoid it. Because what you can't afford to do, and banks and, the, the banks or the VRA will most likely look favorably on it. If you say, well, you know what, we'll just use some cash, we'll kick the can till three years or four years from now, do the next reval. That probably won't. They say it won't work, but that's not the financial management.
You know, I've said this before.
So thank you, everybody.
What you, yeah, what y'all brought to the table was probably some of the best money Ottawa County ever spent, and I, I can't, I can't see us moving forward without having you guys by our side. I, I, I just can't, I mean, I will, uh, I will pick up a law book and start doing the law work for the to cut through speeds to make sure we can stay over here and keep you guys on. I, I think it's imperative that we keep y'all by, with y'all's experiences invaluable right now for this county. And it's gonna be a more transparent explanation back to the citizens at the end of the day as well. I got a headache.
That's why I said, be, be kind to them.
Well, thank y'all guys. Did, did anybody have any other questions?
What would you like to do? What would you want to think about? And when's, when's the next one?
Thursday night.
Oh, gosh.
No, I mean, if you're looking for consensus tonight, I'm.
Well, I mean, you know, again, I don't want, but we, we, what we do want to do, at the very least, is, again, I mean, yes, we'll work, like, I get all that, but putting an application to VRA to get started is not, it's not, given all the stuff we've already done, you know? Not very hard. I mean, they don't, they don't charge an application for the used to. They got away from that about five years ago. So, I mean, from that perspective, we want to get in that queue, and I, I don't want to miss that. That's a big one.
Yeah, August fourth is my birthday, and I don't want that to be August fourth, National Night Out, same night as National Night Out, so. Hey, I will be fifty. It's gonna be a party in Ottawa, I promise you that. You're gonna turn fifty once. That's right.
Just to reiterate, starting the VRA process isn't, we're not committed to anything.
No.
I mean, I think it's smart.
I do too. Exactly. And do, I, I mean, this is a work session. If we need to make a formal motion, then you can let us know.
I don't think we do. I think there's, I mean, think, like I said, we don't need a formal motion yet.
Okay.
I would think, Artie, probably the formal motion comes in September probably. What do you think? Am I wrong?
Like the decision point go?
No, for the application, we need it, for the application to VRA, do we need it?
Let's do August fourth.
I'm saying, what about these folks? You think we'll need the formal resolution saying we'd like to go to?
Oh, yes, that's mid-September.
I thought. That doesn't still, that still doesn't lock you in. You know, they'll tell, what they do is they'll tell us, VRA, let's say they say yes to us, you know what I mean, they'll accept our application. They'll say, go with me, maybe it's October first, it's a drop dead date. So, you know, what I think's gonna happen is we'll work with you, set some parameters, like I said, but even before then, what I'd like to do is go to the banks and formally get their input. Again, same thing. They're not, we're not committed to do something with the banks. But I think we want to get real responses. And I'm giving you estimates. Estimates don't mean anything. They're just estimates. Let's see what.
Well, if, if y'all would, just, just something to chew on between now and, and next week, is, is something a little bit different. At our EDC meeting, we've had this discussion a little bit, that came up about hiring our own grant writer. I mean, clearly with what's going on here, having our own on staff, they prove to be something, one of the best hires this county's ever done. I'd be in favor of moving towards that. I'm just asking you all to think about that and maybe have some directions, even if we, if Ted may want to bring a salary range for something like that, for some discussion of the new business real, real brief next week, and have that discussion about a grant write. I mean, what Blackstone's been able to do with theirs, it's just, it's just unbelievable. And then you'd have somebody else there with Ted, working with these folks as well, and I think it's could pay huge dividends in the future. Just, just think about it, please. But that's, that's all I had to do. Anybody else have anything else?
So before we move off, I'm sending them to move it off this topic. Okay, so here's the draft agenda for not doing model over here.
Thank you guys. Thank y'all so much. I mean, every, every time, y'all, y'all have been very nice. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Oh, you was passing, oh, he was passing the mail. No, I mean.
This is, this is.
This is the agenda for next week. No, he did get two.
Oh, he got two.
I was bad, I was bad. Thank you guys. Y'all have a safe ride back, and we'll see you soon.
So, um, Chairman, I made this work through it. This is the draft agenda for next week. I wonder if you got public hearing, I'll start the session, and then the comprehensive plan. Public hearing. Get into the unfinished business of animal shelter update. He's toy away. Line adjustment in just this evening, and then the Burkeville founding line adjustment. Just this evening. Printed it. But I'll, that'll be the board tab. Is there any other unfinished business anybody? No, not trying to think of. I've done new business of board appointments. This is for with Mr. Bowe's departure, Mr. Ingram joining in. What is it that the board would want to appoint Mr. Ingram to, or if you all want to move anything around? You'll have that list to look at and, and consider. About half of the literacy board is up for appointments this month. So you have your surplus property action for the school property from Blackstone, or the Blackstone property, and then the same surplus school property for Crew. Chairman asked that we have a discussion with Parks and Rec Committee. I had a, and I mean, switch these two. Overall budget update to address Barthel. It was part of the last meeting relative to Crew, but just overall, Barthel is another, another project that's popped up. And we have the health benefits, benefits proposal, which does need to be acted on. You did hear a lot of good news tonight, or maybe a lot of difficult news? We'll have some good news for you in the health benefits.
Good.
And then our percentage agenda, June expenditures, we are, we're, we're working to get that to you, but in light of our present situation, that may have to be carried over. But then we also have one budget adjustment from the school system. Then you have your routine correspondence. Any questions so far?
There's a conference coming up.
Yes, ma'am. I was gonna address that in my county administrators report, but it's a good point. So in fact, I've even written some of the suggested motions as at your next regular meeting in August. Okay, so there's a VACO summer conference. Set the information out. It's in Richmond. The schedule, the, the schedule showed it going till five o'clock. And I think five. You're on that committee, Mr. Vaughn's on that committee, you're on the earlier afternoon committee. So does the board want to consider changing its August meeting? And if so, to when? But you don't have to make the decision right now, but it might be something for you all to consider.
Yes, that we do it the following week.
EDC.
That's the way we make after move EDC, because normally that's what we do.
Or you can pick another night of the week. I know you typically lock in on Thursdays, but.
Well.
Can we do, can we do the Wednesday report? Would y'all be all right with that?
We'd be fine.
All right, so I'll put something in there that you all want to do, the Wednesday, change made after that. The August the sixth, and then the twenty-third, eight twenty-three. Oh, I thought you meant the Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before the regular.
I thought you meant the Wednesday before EDC. Eight, eight sixteen, okay.
Yeah, and, and, oh, another new business. Can we add that? The discussion for the grant writer?
Let me.
Well, if.
Can I put that in the budget update?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Speak to the grant writer.
I mean, I know y'all got a lot going on, and if y'all can, if you can get the information, you know, that's.
Well, I think we've tapped into, we've tried to tap into a server that will give us comparisons
Okay.
of, you know, how much does this type of person make in this size jurisdiction?
What type server is that?
It's through UVA Center of Government.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, man. Now, that day was changed from what?
To the sixteen?
Sixteen.
August sixteen.
Well, the sixteen.
And you want to do that, well, obviously both LRA and.
Yes.
Okay. And that means you can't go late, because you gotta get up early.
That's right.
That's right.
Thirty minutes.
But I kinda need to know who wants to go. Mr. Vaughn, I know you, you, you're planning to go.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Ingram?
I'll let him know. It's the seventeenth?
It's the seventeenth, yes, sir.
Um, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Kinda hard on a workday for me to plan this.
I understand, I understand.
And I, I don't know what my brother's availability is gonna be, so I'll still be on the, crawling on the house. I would like to go.
That sounded creepy, didn't it? I won't say, I won't say that again. I'll be, I'll still be doing plumbing, crawling around. All right, guys, did y'all have anything, any comments? How is it, Dickie?
Welcome.
Go, go find that psychiatrist.
All right, so Alex psychiatrists, dinner grant writer?
Yes, yes.
Dickie will make an excellent.
Yes.
He will.
We'll see. I feel good about it. Appreciate that, Mr. Vaughn.
I don't think anybody's gonna regret that decision. Absolutely not. Well, well, members, entertain a motion of adjournment? All right, all in favor, signify by standing up and leaving.
Not voting, I'm just standing up.